Welcome to the Belgrade Funding Board Meeting of August the 3rd. It is 6:04 and we're going to go through a roll call for Minutetaker person. We have with us Mr. Richard Baker, Mr. Nick Siccaro, Peter Sargent, myself Sarah Langgett, Mr. George Seal, Mr. Craig Alessandro, and Hans Ramonsen. So in the audience, we're expecting to have representatives from an application for Six Chestnut Road, map 50 lot 23. I'm going to give them a few minutes.
Online, we have John Slotter. He's a resident of 90 Pine Beach Road. He's just going to watch the proceedings tonight.
Well, maybe we can do that, sure. I guess we'll agree with that to move on to the second item on agenda already. Let's do that. So the second item in the agenda is to discuss the Affordable Housing Act. We have the KB Cog ordinance review. And we had a very interesting meeting with KB Cog. It was soon on, that was Tuesday in the PM hours. And we were able to solve a lot of questions with them specifically. It was, we tackled the finance aspect of being able to enact this new law. So we're going to be getting, we're going to have KB Cog as a resource for free. We were able to fill out the paperwork and we qualify with the state to be able to have them as a resource and not cost to the taxpayers. With that, I open the floor for discussion on this topic. I want to add as a preamble that I put together a little bit of a timeline. And I based that timeline on the estimations that were done previously for the solar ordinance. When Anthony Wilson was here, he flew the day by day timeline. We started, the deadline to wrap up our work was like June 12th to make it for the November voting session. So it's about five months. So going back from, I guess by state expectations, this thing has to be wrapped up by summer of 2024. So my thought will be that this will go to the borders in the March, Tom meeting. Times. So going back from there, which is usually mid-March, going back five months and then adding a gap month because between Thanksgiving and Christmas, things kind of don't flow that tiny other years almost out. Our cushion in six months. So it means that we need to get this wrapped up, I would say by the end of September.
So can you fill me in what's going on? I mean, I wasn't involved in all that email thing, Zoom meetings and whatever was going on.
So I would say, I will delegate that to Mr. Seal to give you, Mr. Seal just pretty good about the details about this whole thing. Because he knows the previous law and the new thing that the state wanted to do, so.
Sure. Are you familiar with this new law at all, Craig?
Somewhat. They want to double up on, you know, houses.
Yeah, yeah. So that was initially approved in 2022. Then there were amendments made this past legislative session in 2023. And I mean, summed it up as well as can be summed up. It's an attempt to create more affordable housing three different ways, but I think only a couple of them affect us. The, but that's what we got to figure out. We need to figure out what ordinances are impacted by this. And certainly the minimum lot size ordinance is. Maybe the, the multifamily dwelling unit ordinance, which everybody should have received. I sent an email to everybody with a link to that on the town website. Because some, a number of you mentioned that you'd never seen it before. It's right on the town website under the planning board with the other ordinances. Great. And, and so the way the state has set this up, the agency that is administering this and implementing this law is the Department of Economic and Community Development. And they have a housing section in their affordable housing section. The, they've adopted rules that are regulations to implement the law. It, it's kind of jumbled a little bit because of the legislature changing sort of things midstream. But the, now that those have been passed, they also passed rules to set up a grant process. And, and so for bigger towns, like towns with zoning, they can apply for grants directly from the state to get assistance or consultants, whoever to, or they could even hire KB Cog if they wanted to help them implement this. For towns like us that don't have zoning, the assistance would come directly from KB Cog. And as Sarah mentioned, the, this Zoom meeting on Tuesday was about that grant process and what towns like Belgrade needed to do to kind of get in the queue. And, and the, the letter that Sarah mentioned was a letter of requesting, well, it was a letter of voicing support for KB Cog's grant to the state. By virtue of doing that, we get basically, we get it on their waiting list for technical assistance. And what they'll be able to offer us is our review of our ordinances to figure out which ones are impacted and then work with us to make whatever changes might be, you know, we feel we want to make and what would be necessary to comply with the law. They're anticipating getting the money in September sometime, probably later in September. We'll see. The, but there's only, I believe, if I understood correctly, and if you get a different impression, Sarah, let me know that there's only one town ahead of us, and that's Solon. And at the select board at Tuesday, their Tuesday meeting approved the letter that, that Lorna had drafted or basically a form letter that KB Cog gave her, and she, you know, footbilled Belgrade and words said town of. And, and so that's been submitted. And so I guess we're second in line on their waiting list.
Okay, we call it.
For KB Cog to help us.
Help us what?
Yeah, yeah. And, I mean, I think an important part will be them helping us figure out what parts of the existing ordinances, you know, need to be changed to be in compliance with. I mean, I've looked at the regulations that have been developed and there's one whole section I don't understand. So I don't know if that applies. So certainly the accessory dwelling units, that definitely applies to us. And so we'll have to work our way through that. And that, that's primarily in the minimum lot size ordinance.
So is that affected by the shore damage or is it?
No, no. The areas surely and zoning are not impacted by this law, which is a good thing.
Okay.
My first, for simplicity, if there's no other reason.
So with that, I guess the mindset is that we can, between now and the end of September, crunch all we can on our own. And then when the money kicked in there, we can call them over and say, here's what we don't know what to do. And try to wrap it up within, then we could stop there. Maybe we'll go into mid-October.
And I've just provided some resource materials.
Yeah.
Peter's looking at, and what's good about this one here is the back has a little chart of the towns that implemented. And this is fodder, right? Food for thought for us to think about where we want to go. But we also need to think about where we're going to end up. Four years down the road, we've got houses with accessory dwelling units that change hands. And a new owner might be an investment owner versus an occupant owner. So some of these things have occupants or occupancy required. If we try to do that, where do we go when the real estate changes hands?
Yeah.
So this is something we can visit if you want to go back to our first.
Well, one interesting thing that I know when looking at this, and thanks for buying this on, is this was drafted in January of 2022. So it was several months before this new law came out. So.
Well, you also have.
So some of these, like Cape Elizabeth and some of the towns like that, I think they were like towns that were in the crosshairs of the legislature. Because they thought their zoning was sort of unfriendly to affordable housing.
And you also have a copy of the latest version of the, right there, the chapter five. Article 19, this. So that's, that was done end of July. So that's what we have to apply for.
So I guess we recap, we have a good idea of what this whole project for the funding board will entail. And so if we can probably reset right here and then go back to the number one item in agenda, which is an application from Sean Pratt and Manisha Tabor. All right. And the location of the project was in Six Chestnut Road, map 50 lot 23, and the purpose is to transform camp from visual to year-round usage. So with that, I will say that yesterday, it seems like a long time since yesterday. Yesterday afternoon, we have, the planning board had a site visit. We had four members of the planning board exploring the site and getting familiar with the physical set of the, where the plan is going to happen. And we got some notes out of that, that I've been forward to everybody, pictures of the site as well. And with that, I will open the floor for discussion on this project. I wonder if the applicant has, you still would like to see, I think you would consider the three options or,
and I'm probably driving you crazy, but let me summarize it. We said, I don't know that you work at anybody at a time. It's a statement filed that I sent later this morning. So this was Sarah's original idea, which in theory sounded like a great idea. This is the option A that we've been looking at where you move the house, what seemed like as far back as possible and add the addition to the side. My squarely blue line is the area that you all and Sean pointed out to me was a very sloopy increase in grade. And if I were to build this, I'd be building my home into a hill. And so after looking at that, I was like, this is a good one. I thought, well, I, my place is really cute. I'm just one person. Maybe I just keep it as it is and don't make it year-round and just put on the allowable addition on stills. So that's where I was just kind of exhausted with the whole process that I'm, I'm getting pushed further down the construction line with heat times. And although, well, you know, just keep it as it is, feeling bad that it's not good for the environment at all. But that's where I left it. And then I came back to this thought as we were all talking and had been very, and we started thinking like, okay, what is practical? What does that mean? Practical can't be this set definition for every lot because of the geographical differences that can be in lots. And this is a classic example. And so this pink area that I sketched out, actually I went back and it is exactly the layout that I brought on, on the last time. So my thought process is we basically, we needed a really deep dive collectively in finding out all the information. And I would propose that for the sake of the environment, that we, we use the option that I originally had come with last time. It keeps the house, it saves the big tree, it moves it away from the lake. It keeps me within all of the local setback ordinances. And it seemed like the best solution for everyone. That said, I'm also happy to keep it as it is too and just build an addition. I just don't think that's the best ecological answer.
Can I show them?
Yes, please. Can I, for what, that last option has a foundation?
Yes, the last option has, is exactly what I originally proposed. Actually, I didn't even quite realize.
Option A, option A will have a foundation itself too.
Option A would have a foundation, but it's not equal. I won't do it.
Okay.
Because the house could be built into a hill and it would be like a cave.
Yeah.
So option A is now, it's now the end of the construction and the top bracket.
B is in stills.
So B is a play, which is the existing house and on stills and adding a addition on stills and having no improvement to the ecology. But I could live with that. And my proposed compromise proposal is option C, which would be the best one for the lake. Works with all of the things that we have discussed and emailed and gone back and forth with Colin and local codes and everybody. And would have a foundation and would let me be here year-round.
But it would be exactly as what's in the application at the moment?
Ironically, yes.
Well, what I'm going to, the option C is with a foundation for everything?
Yes.
Yes. So option C, quite literally, when we, at the very end, we're like, okay, wait, you know, I drew in the pink thing and we were all like, oh, wow, all right. That is exactly what is in the original proposal. So yeah, it would be full foundation.
Okay. And, and that's probably the most expensive way to go, right?
Yes, which is why I'm completely happy if you detail it and I end up with having to keep it on stills. But.
Okay.
So. But I don't think that would be very good. My brother's on the Seven Lakes board and he thinks it's horrible that the house is dropping water the way it is. It's just not good.
So practicality, I'm going to voice my opinion. And option C is the best, best route to go. And I'm not for option B, even though you can do it. And that'll be cheapest for you, better than, it's not practical at all. And same with option A, you're just digging into a hillside. So I would be all for option C. And that's the original permit. And I believe that's the most practical way to go after my site visit.
Sarah, I had a number of questions for those of you that did the site visit. For example, if you look at the photographs that were provided in the application, there's clearly an area of flat ground immediately behind the, away from the lake, behind the existing camp. Did you happen to measure that? It looks to me like it's eight feet. Oh, seven feet. Okay. So that's about what your proposal moves back. Because that goes to the toe, about to the toe of the slope, the 10 to 15% slope. Okay. Well, that's good. I did it by just, I divides a scale for the building and estimated it that way. But because since I didn't make the, another question, and you've done a nice job of answering my questions about the different options. Because the fact that one was the same as what we started out with threw me off. But so one of the pictures that came in this morning is a picture that very nicely shows your cottage relative to Mr. Smith right next door, which we had to grapple with the same issues of how far back was it? And I'm curious if, when you're out in the field, whether you looked at that and see relatively speaking, I mean, you can tell from the photo that he's under construction. And how much back further did we require him to go?
I'd forget particularly, but I noticed that when I checked before I walked out, I probably didn't even see the site. And I really, I would, what she wanted to do was similar to what was done by Mrs. Smith. So you want to talk about it?
I don't know. Just, I know it almost aligns. All three camps should be aligned.
So pretty consistent. Yeah, that's where I was going.
Yeah, Jimmy's lot is much smaller than mine. So with the leeways, he was not as far back as practically for him. I think about three feet. And so what I'm proposing would almost perfectly align the front of my place with the front of his place.
In the house next to that.
Yeah, and just, yeah.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with, with Ms. Alexander. I think really seems like probably the best, best option. I mean, you obviously don't have to do anything and that would be the worst. Well, actually, A would probably be the worst.
Because it'd be expensive and it wouldn't work.
Yeah. Well, no, B would probably be the worst because you wouldn't be doing anything to your current home and then adding an additional property around. So I think our objective goal is to, you know, protect the habitat of and that that water runoff is a problem. I mean, it's that running water.
So I was curious about this whole thing, this previous precedence. Already, probably having decided moving to this one. And the only difference between the two projects is that Mr. Smith didn't have, didn't have any place to go back, basically. But in this project, there's this place to go back. I know the.
It's still got to be there.
Yeah.
So, but as far as moving it back, I mean, we're moving back to the base of the hill. That's the most practical spot, the way back. And then she has to dig into the hill to put the addition in.
So she won't, she only will be available to move, if anything, eight feet as well.
Well, I measured seven. Whatever.
Yeah, no, your measurement's better than my estimate.
I had a quick question. I mean, I think I missed this. Is the, is the proposed structure going to be your existing camp moved and put on a foundation or can it follow construction?
Yeah.
But he is going to get rid of that.
Yeah. What he do is he, he even out the stone, get rid of that lip. So it'd be one roof.
Right, and all itself, it's no itself.
Exactly for the whole structure.
Right, right. As long as that's perfect, Richard, the question.
Yeah, of course. I had been involved in this, but I was trying to follow along with you. Thank you. Option two, I guess I have a question. Does option two that Greg is, is he okay with?
Yeah.
Does that involve?
Yeah, I couldn't see.
Easy vent up and B, up and she.
Oh, yeah. But I thought you said there was option two or whatever. But anyway, the question I, real question I have is any of the expansion, the new structure behind the existing structure under these expansions? And if so, I don't know how you can argue that you're making a setback to the greatest practical extent when you're adding to the back. Obviously, you're adding to the back. You can't, it's not back to the greatest practical extent. Or else you, because I think we got to look at this thing as, here's the original structure, right? And the foundation, not really. That has to be moved back to the greatest practical extent. And then you determine whether you can put an expansion on that afterward. I don't think the expansion is a given. The expansion is what's allowed after you move it back. What can you do at that point? Anyway.
So my interpretation of practical, because we're the planning board, we have to interpret it as practical. First of all, it takes the water away from the lake, well, from the sides, otherwise rather than dumping it right onto the lake. Option B is just going to put a roof line straight across the same direction east-west as the lake. So it's going to be dumped right towards the lake. It's still going to be in a hillside. So as far as practicality, option C isn't as practicality, even though it's not going back right into the driveway where it's still, it's the, I mean, option A, third, is the, is the best practicality of doing that. And she has a right to put the addition on. So if I got to let her, if we're not going to let her do that, then she's going to do C. Which is the worst thing we could do.
Oh, C is what she wants to do.
Oh, I think we're looking at different sets. So basically, maybe.
Minor in different order, sorry.
Yeah.
Option A.
That's not which one you actually see.
So I'm for option C.
So can we go back a step where we were at the last meeting?
You lost.
Yeah.
With the foundation. And that's the original purpose.
Yes.
Your application.
Original application, sorry.
So.
Was when, last week ago, which I thought that was different.
No.
Well, well.
It was very similar.
I made a point in the notes that, and the media, the way he had, she had been, the options laid out two weeks ago is different than this.
Okay, so what's correct?
This one, this one. We're talking about the one today.
So Craig, you are in favor of option C, okay?
Correct.
And right? And, and one building altogether.
Yes.
Right.
With one roof.
Full foundation and the whole thing, okay?
Yes.
One roof, getting rid of that, right?
Right.
Okay.
That makes the most practical sound.
And, and that's going to be the most expensive. Right? So that's, that's a new practice. To me, that's not being very practical.
Well, the other one too would be expensive, option A.
So for the other one is B, you say? Another one you referred to with B?
Yeah, you know that.
B is on stills and she, that would be her second option.
For her.
But that's doing nothing to the existing.
But you look at the roof lines and a spittle on the water right underneath one camp.
Okay. All right, then 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 option A. Uh is.
Building into the hillside.
Is. Two, two, two separate camps?
No.
One, one.
Oh.
That's the that's the original, that would.
Okay, that goes.
Yeah, and that's and that's further up. Towards the road there, right? Up the good rail tracks.
Correct.
Okay. Fine, that will be, that that would be the most expensive, you want, you have to do much more. Uh of of the three options. Option A would be the most expensive to do, because you have to go more into the hillside, a lot more exhibition. That to me. The expense here would be very, very. Uh impractical, alright.
Yeah, that that's the most impractical of them all.
And option was.
Yeah, well, well.
Practical.
Yeah, okay, no, I said that would be the most impractical.
Involved by part, yeah.
Okay.
So I I I. I don't know much of. Construction, I have just a little uh. Uh sense of it. So if option A and option C, both of them requires the same print of uh foundation. Why one will will be uh more expensive than the other?
They they don't require the same, because the in option, option C. It's not going back as far as as often as often uh A. Option A, it's pushing it way back on like into the hill, so you're way into the way.
The same print have to be again. Down to make a foundation on both.
We we require more digging, because you're further back into the hills, you're digging more of the hill, you're digging more, you're further back into a hill. Getting closer to the tree and you know. And you're gonna be getting a lot of rocks, you don't know the rock.
Know what you did, what you're gonna get, like you said.
Well, neither 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 position, you don't know what you're getting.
Yeah, no, I'm just talking about as far as practicality is concerned. Option.
Sure, I got a point to make if I could, um. First off, um what is meant by uh to the greatest practical extent, as Nick pointed out at the last meeting, is defined in the. In the ordinance and some of the things we've been discussing are not included in that. Um so I would suggest people to review that, that's on. Page thirteen, um but if we could go back to the beginning, because I just wanna make sure you guys had obviously had conversations. At the site and and if Luke brought the head, um and um. My question for all of you is, are we all on the same page now? Uh given that we have an opinion from Colin Clark from D E P that we have to first decide how. To what the greatest practical extent we move, the uh current cottage has to be moved back and then and only then do we decide how much of a. Uh addition can be added? Or are we still in disagreement about that? Because you may recall, we ended the last meeting in disagreement. We decided that we were gonna get a legal opinion. Uh Hans, though, um was able to get a written opinion, just like Rich had originally, from Colin. Saying that. What I just said, that you have to consider, uh uh you need to consider the uh. Whether or not the original camp can be moved back to a greater practical extent, and that applies both whether there's a foundation or not. If you're moving it, you still have that can, that issue to deal with in under the ordinance. So where are we?
So we're discussing what's practical means, and if you. And. Um let's slide your stuff. Um. If practical. Uh if by doing practical, as far as the first move. Makes an observe, observe. Uh. Movement afterwards, then it's not practical. So we have to think. About what's best for the place and. And quite frankly, I don't wanna see. Or keep it on stills and and put this, because that doesn't mean.
And that's because of the roof line and the.
Roof lines and the runoff and that's.
I mean, all of, all these options have considerable risk of possible soil erosion. I think that's a, there, there, there's no difference between one and the other discernible to me. I think your point is a good one, but that's not the question I'm asking. The question I'm asking is the legal question that we disagreed about, including you. Uh I as to whether we're gonna uh, whether the ordinance requires us to uh determine. To what extent we can practically move the original cottage back first before we even consider the addition.
I don't know, it's um.
Cause i- if we're still in disagreement about that, we cannot act on this application, and I would suggest we move ahead and get the legal.
Why can't we act on it? Just because we disagree, I mean, there's yes votes and there's no votes.
Well. Except that I I don't wanna risk us making a decision that we can't defend.
Well, okay, I feel like.
And and it doesn't follow the ordinance.
The the key, the hit the problem is if the word practical, right, and word practical is in it, if the word practical wasn't in it and it said. You must move, if you're gonna do an addition, you must move it back as far as possible. If it said that, well, we would chuck it in the far north. East corner, you know what I mean, um. Or whatever would be the the southwest, but. The word practical is in there, so practical, like if you do like a simple, if I do a simple Webster dictionary search. I mean, practically, it says, as far as practical construction, it says interpretation of a statute or document in a manner that does not. Defeat its purpose, especially when a strict interpretation would produce clearly unintended or absurd results. And I say she has to move it all the way back into the hill, it's a absurd result, you know? So the prac, the word practical is. What, we were all at the site yesterday and. It's not that we are in favor of, you know, we just looked at and said, this should be the most practical thing. The my number one priority is to stop the runoff into that lake. That's that that should be our number one priority. And so if, you know, we can, she can come in before, but she doesn't have to do anything and she can keep it as it. Which I'm, I I would be dead set against, you know, she's she has that right, but. If she's wanting to move that house back. To the most practical extent for her, that's what I, you know, I would be in favor of. And then as the, if you were there at the site, you could see that would, that made the most sense.
Let's go back to the ordinance for a moment. So in in um. This non-conforming structures section on page thirteen, and and Nick, you referred us to this last time.
Yeah.
It uh in determining whether the building relocation.
What paragraph are you on?
Uh it's uh, well, it's all the first part paragraph, it it starts in determining whether it's about ten lines down.
Okay.
And uh so in determining whether the building relocation meets the setback to the greatest practical extent. Planning board shall consider the size of the lot, the slope of the land, as we've been discussing. The potential for soil erosion, the location of other structures on the property and on adjacent properties, the location of the septic system. And other on-site soils suitable for septic systems and the type and amount of vegetation to be removed. To accomplish the relocation and and. On, that's been discussed in terms of not wanting to cut down a big pine tree. Um. The uh and and then it goes on about having to uh replant. I mean, that's, that's how the, that's how the ordinance defines. To the greatest practical extent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I I am too, uh it's just that some of you have been talking about. Issues that aren't related to that.
Like what?
Cost.
Oh, yeah, cost, I I I, yeah, that's the cost. It doesn't have.
Well, what? Well, it's just not cost, it's also erosion, and you know, because.
Yeah, no, I agree, I agree, but the cost, I I don't. Take that and consider.
I don't even.
I do, but okay, yeah, okay, right, alright, okay. I'm glad. Doesn't say. I'm glad.
Option C.
Do it, there is some kind of definition discussion about practicality, you can.
You know, uh option C is the best.
Well, Nick, Nick pointed out that it's must.
Yeah.
Oh, I I was. Just wanted to, oh, sorry.
I'm still staying on options C is best practical. It's the best for the land, it's best for the. Um.
I, there there's very good points on the floor in regards to this uh um. Application. And. I usually wanna reframe everyone to have the vision that our job here. Is to understand if what the applicant. Would like to uh move forward. Past the ordinance or not, that's all that we are. Engaged with. So uh that said. Uh is there any way that you can say which option you like to see moving, because. Uh what I will say about the three options, option A. As he, he goes, is it puts off into that uh line of uh in in section where the slope stands. But still, you can move the structure forward. And that was the option that uh Colin's favorite for being the most. The post, the concept. To be the most uh. To comply with the most practical uh. Uh stand location. Uh the structure might necessarily have to be. Cutting into that line of inflection for the incline of the slope. It can be moved forward and just being at the edge of that eight feet. Um. So um. That, that would be just looking at location, forgetting about uh. Uh runoff and anything else because. Yeah, we're concerned about the uh runoff into a lake and the ecological impact, but there. In that sense, there's many ways to skin the cap. For instance, uh uh and this doesn't have, this has nothing to do with application, but. We have a lot in the lakes that. We wish could be buildable, but because of the lot size ordinance, we can't. And it's in an incline and recently we put in a. Where it's got a rubber blade and as the runoff comes from the top, that stops the the water going down and directed to a a pit, a whole pit. So there, in terms of preventing the runoff of the lot, there's many ways to skin that cap. Uh and what we are faced here exclusively is uh. The location of the, of the camp. So um that said. Will be there a reasonable way to ask you. Which option you would like the board to process?
Yes, uh very clearly C. I I'm not gonna do A. Um if if I have, so I'm. I'm asking to do C. Um I won't do A. Not worth the money, I gotta just keep it as it is. So.
So then.
Either C is approved or I want, I'll do B, which I say with a funny face, because um. That's not good for the lake.
Okay. So, so let's start then uh. Uh have the board discuss option C. And uh from there decide what we're gonna, how we're gonna go about it. So I heard what I I'm just repeating what it was said, I'm not trying to decide either way or the other. So I heard uh that uh. Uh there, there are members that all actually are up for approving option C. And I heard Mr. Seal said that um. According to the uh opinion we got from D E P, that there's a two-step. Uh consideration. And they were wishing to the most practical extent. And I hear Mr. uh Baker said that if an addition can place, be placed behind the cap. Then the original structure is not in the most of. Most uh uh practical stand location.
That that was my point, and I'm looking at uh the picture. Second, third page of the application, I see the instructor. And I don't. Can't figure out how it couldn't be moved further back. Uh before putting the foundation, I was based on under it. Uh and not. The not improving the erosion problem, the runoff problem simply because it's. Further back from the water. And these erosion issues could be addressed with. Uh. Non-point store or erosion control measure. Uh to address the uh erosion from the, move back. Move it back twenty feet, fifteen feet, you got fifteen feet of shore, of of shore that you can address the erosion problem. But anyway, um.
Sarah, I have a question for Rich, actually.
Sure.
The uh. So I I I mean, I I haven't made up my mind on this yet, um. But um partly because uh I still have questions of, um but the um. Uh in in. What's in actually in the application, which is turns out to be a uh so-called option C. The um would move the original camp back to the toe of the slope. Um the approximately and um. And I had the same question that you did or that you're raising that. How can you, what's the logic that says? Uh if you can build something new, you can't move the camp back to the same location. Um. Cause it seemed to me if it if um uh you know, the question by logic is. That if you can build there, you can build there and and uh. And so uh you can't really rule it out as not being practical. Uh under the cir- circumstances spilled out into the, you know, for example, slope, because of the slope, you can't, um but. I'm not sure that's how we've implemented the ordinance in the past. I think in my recollection is, and we've only had two, I think, like this, where it wasn't just a foundation or it wasn't. You know, there was, it was a. A movement of the original camp and and an addition. Um. The neighbor, Mr. Smith being one. Uh which we made him reconfigure his addition considerably. Um the uh. Um. But it seems to me historically with. Oh, uh. And I can't quite remember the other one, but uh. The uh uh we've. Only required the original camp to be moved back to the greatest practical extent. And I think. A couple of these cases have been because of slope. And then we allowed an addition wherever it could still fit.
Thinking of the way that they're uh. Processed, and that was the one where Colin kind of got back to us and said, you guys shouldn't be doing it that way. But we did do a a proven advancement over on Great Pond. Uh and. The general area, pink and cold.
Oh, yeah, that's the one.
Off the hillside. Remember.
I also have a question.
Came and he hasn't, his leg brace or whatever at the time I worked, mentioned uh what happened very, whatever it was that time. But uh. You know, I I. Would say that we may never think on that one, uh. Looking at where can you move it first, then look at where your extension.
So. For me, I know I've heard that many, many times, um. The main, if he was looking at the camp and was just gonna move the camp, the greatest practical extent would be at the toe of that hill. If he was just moving the camp. So right there. Is the greatest practical extent, and that she wants to go further and beyond. To put an addition on there. There's. A lot more. To it. But the greatest practical extent, if he was just gonna pick that camp up and move it, would be seven feet.
But Craig, how do you respond to the question that I have about? If you can build an addition there, why can't you move the camp?
It doesn't mean it's practical, it's gonna be a lot more than practical. Practical moving that camp, if you're looking at just the camp, just moving the camp, just as Rich says. If you was just gonna move that, you'd move it seven feet, and that's the practical extent of moving that camp. So what she wants to do afterwards is up to her.
So your point is that we're constrained by the definition of practical extent, and if she wants to. Build a Taj Mahal behind that, even if it's not practical, it's okay.
Up to her, as long as it's not more than four hundred.
That's not how I'm supposed to judge.
Be a really nice Taj Mahal, small.
Yeah, small, a small Taj Mahal.
Exactly what he said, it's the definition of practical, taking that camp and putting it right where the slope begins is the definite right. Asking her to dig out a hill and put her original camp in a hill is the definition of impractical. So we're moving that camp back as far as possible, she decides she wants to put on addition, which she's allowed to do, she's gotta dig a hill out to do it. And uh no, that's up to her, but as I I would be a one hundred percent confident arguing. You know, my, my, my vote or, you know, what my philosophy or interpretation of this ordinance. I would have no problem doing. I I think you'd have a problem, I mean, that's. I, I think you'd have a problem, I mean, hence the reality.
Can I, my strength is being moved back seven feet.
And not only that, the pitch is being changed and go north, north south, which is parallel with the water as opposed to where it is currently. Which is an option, that she can keep it as it is and just keep running water off into it and, you know, into women that walk by the waters. Really, it's, I think, I believe if you look at the definition of our job as a planning board, it's like first sentence. It's a protect, it's a protect that water.
I am, um. I'm gonna make a quick point on that and then I'll, I'll, I'll let down for be uh Mr. Sheridan uh Britain. So um again, I, I want uh the board to understand. That our job is to understand the rules and make sure that the application goes through the rules, that's our job.
They, we've had a question here, uh growth and quality, et cetera, and yeah, and come up with uh. If I answered correctly that she'd like to go with the option C. I mean, uh so I, I'm, I'm, I myself, I think we're at the point, I, uh someone can make a uh. Uh uh recommendation to uh. Which one are we gonna vote for and put into a vote? Go for the voting for us.
I'm not ready to vote yet.
Okay.
Um if I had to was forced to vote right now, I don't know. On the um. I have one additional question I have is. Um it, it sounds like Craig, you've seen a profile drawing of option C, I, I can't find one. I, I don't see one cuz we were talking about the roof line and, and things that relate to the uh stormwater standard.
The original application. By moving it back seven feet, you get the porch moved beyond twenty-five feet, so you can go, you can change the pitch.
Oh, okay, I misunderstood, I thought you were talking about changing the roof line or something. So where's that in the, in the site drawings, I don't have a profile drawing, oh here it is, nevermind, you're right. Okay, so that would be a peak rather than a slump towards the. Yeah, I mean. Yeah, I guess that does make it a little easier to deal with the stormwater, it's still gonna be uh a challenge. Okay, good, um the uh. Other question I had uh was with regard to, and this is for you, um. The, the. Everything else in this application remains the same, you know, all these drawings of the different options aside for the moment, you know, that's all. Well and good discussion, but you know, we're back at the bottom line, um the uh. Um that, that remains the same as what you'd originally proposed. Thank you. Square footage is all.
Everything the same, you went full circle.
I um.
No, um. So one thing, um regardless of how this goes, uh. I don't know, is your contractor D E P certified um excavation contractor?
Yes, he is.
He is, okay, we'll need that number.
Yeah, I don't know if he is, but I'm sure it's, we can put that as a condition.
Yeah.
Um cuz I'm not sure of Charles.
Well, you don't have an excavator.
Right. Right.
Yeah, so we'll just.
Do that with the condition.
Um and a matter of housekeeping for the board, um. A lot of the discussions happened off the public record. And we need to get it on the public record uh as a matter of course, um. I think the best way to do that is for, uh my suggestion would be for Hans, if you would. Print off uh the. Uh daisy chain of emails, starting with Sarah's, the one that Sarah sent out this morning. Uh that uh summarizes the findings of the, of the um. Uh the site visit and goes all the way down to your exchange with Colin because. At the moment, none of that's in the public record. We've talked about it, we've alluded to it, but it's not in the public record and, and uh regardless of how this decision goes, uh that. Needs to be in the project file.
So um with all the discussion done, the only other thing, I uh. Uh my biggest concern here, as I said, is that we, we follow the rules that are given and we stick into them and uh. We make a pretty, a resultant decision that we can stand by. And then that we can also rely on for future decisions, it's gonna come back again. Um so um. Being still, at least to me. The understanding of the two-step process and the interpretation of uh. The good interpretation of what uh greatest practical stand or location is. Uh it be, you think we've proven to get a lawyer opinion on that?
Well, here's why I'm undecided, um because. Uh Colin was not asked and consequently did not ever respond or give an opinion on the question that Rich has raised. And that is, if you can build an addition on a, on a, on a portion of a law. Uh does that mean it's practical to move the original camp back that far as well?
I tried to, just for the record, I tried to contact Con- Collins today, but he's on my.
I think he did respond to that in, in the whole sea of email, email chains in the very, um very early. Is part, uh he stated that according to state laws. Um what I was asking for was fine, but you have the final say of a practice. So if he were interpreting it, he would define this as practical. Given the top log, all the different reasons that we put forward, but. You could overrule his feeling that this is practical. And so that was in the very early part of the very, very original thing that started two days after the last.
You said that would leave it up to the board.
Yeah, you said it's your, yeah, your decision, but it, it doesn't contradict.
Right, that's our job.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, I, I read, I reread the whole thing again and uh, uh he at the end. Expressed that uh it's up to the board to decide what practical is.
Yeah.
However, again, the, the question that Mr. Baker placed forward is not answered without.
That is, he, I mean, that was the question.
And he even had a drawing. Saying that was acceptable.
Yes.
So.
So what Rich raised was a very eloquent summation of the, the conundrum that we. Left with.
So can, can you, can you then re- re-explain to me what you understand Rich said?
Yeah, so um Rich is saying, if it's a two-step process.
Yeah.
You, don't you have to start by moving the camp?
Yeah.
Back to the furthest possible place. And then consider adding an addition.
Yeah.
And where we came to from all of that was. That, that is correct if the word practical was not in there. To next point, it doesn't, the, the code is not that you move it back. You know, step one, you move it back as far as possible, it's step one, you move it as far back as practically possible.
You would never be able to put an addition on the back of your house.
Precise, if you, in any case.
You have to move it to the end of your property line now.
And then exactly, by definition, if you started with, without the word practical, there would be no addition.
So that, that's a question you asked?
Uh.
I, I thought that the question you asked was different, I thought you said that if we have a camp. Then we need to move to a most practical stand. And so we move it and we can put a addition behind it. Then we have no move the camp to the most practical stand because the back of the addition is the most practical stand.
No, I disagree, I totally disagree because it doesn't have to be practical. Practical, you gotta take the camp and move it back to the most practical extent, which is at the base of that hill. And what she wants to do after that is none of uh, you know, it can be impractical as hell.
Can I, can I just say, like, for the record, if I'm in construction and do it for a living, there is nothing practical about this addition that she's getting ready to do. Nothing practical, she has to, who knows, but she's gonna hit digging and trying to put that, her addition is, is gonna be very impractical, it's like a. You know, a substantial piece of construction, but her original camp will be back. As practical as possible, cuz it's gonna go back as far as we can until, until it hits the shore. To ask her to dig into the earth with her camp and move her camp, that's, that's impractical. She's putting the camp back as far, as far as she can, if there was any more wrong with, with level around, we would have her moving it back to there. She's putting it back as far as she can, now the addition is gonna be impractical, the moving of the camp is practical, the addition is impractical.
Hans, do you have Colin's email there?
I do, uh well, actually, this is a Sarah response to it. And it's been reformatted in several ways, it, it obviously could.
I just need to refresh my memory on what he said.
He's changed. You gotta start from the back and move forward.
No, I had, I tried to print it out and the same thing happened to me.
Yeah. And I feel like.
I'm, I'm so sorry for the standing discussion, we just wanna get it right now.
Well, and, and it's important not just for this application, cuz I anticipate continuing to see others just like it.
Hmm.
Uh and so, um this is not a one-off.
I'm trying to get that to you.
And also, I, I can't say enough how important it is to try to mitigate the runoff issue that is, that currently exists. And we haven't taken into consideration that, you know, whatever we would like her to do. And say, no, we want you to dig into the earth and, you know, put the camp in the very corner of your property. Uh to get as far away to come up, she can just deny that and keep the camp as currently. And that's the problem, and we, we ultimately, we fail the community if, if we say no, we're gonna make this as difficult as possible for you. And then she says, all right, well, I'm not doing it, I'm keeping it as it is. You know, it's a, it'd be an absolute failure.
There, I would say that uh. When the board is considering this application and looking at very practical stand. I would say we should be looking at it, again, I haven't been on Spado or whatever, but. Looking at it to what would we do with the same individual, same property? And there was no addition proposed. Kind of what is the greatest practical thing? If we typically would say, we've got to the base of a steep slope, we're not gonna make a move back any further. Then that's where we ought to be going with this, where, where can this structure go? Uh I, I understand, you know, part of my thinking was, if you can add something behind it. Uh then you could have moved the structure back.
With that, yeah, yeah.
But, you know, I, I get them, seeing some of the middle ground here, not middle ground, but. Uh you know, the greatest practical extent for, for their, this cottage that's there. Would be treated the same way as the greatest practical extent for the next guy down the road who wasn't. Thinking about putting an addition on, how far back would we put him? And this application, the same answer should apply, but uh.
So would you put him back to?
We put him back to this. We put him where, where we put in the center.
Yeah, and this is gonna align all those camps and move it off the floor and uh it's just a, a win-win-win all the way around.
It's kinda hard to understand the difference in, 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 you know, how bad the slope actually is. Like, you know, three camps are gonna be almost perfectly aligned statically, you know, if, if you were there, you know, it wouldn't, you wouldn't really be having this discussion with you.
So, so then uh following that line of thought, I'm now on with, with the flow of it. So following that line of thought, the seven feet we're talking about. If you throw that camp, it's gonna be moved back seven feet.
Correct.
And the rest now, we're not moving back any further, is your at the basis of a crime.
Yeah.
He'd have to dig in the earth.
I mean, that, that makes.
Uh increasing sense to me because, you know, the answer to Rich's question is how would we. Uh I've handled this uh absent the uh proposal of an addition is we would have moved it back to the toe of the slope. Cuz that's what we've been doing uh and have done on a number of other uh applications, the uh. Uh Colin's email really doesn't address this situation, but um directly, but uh. This question directly, but of, of, you know, well, if you can build it, does that mean it's, you can move there, um but I, I. You know, I, I see the logic and, and the, and the uh soundness of the argument that you, you guys are making of uh. That there's really two standards here, there's a standard in the ordinance, which is to the greatest practical extent and you have actually articulated quite well. Um uh and then there's whatever, you know, you can afford to construct after that. Um whether it's practical or not, um and that's a, that's a standard that's not in the ordinance. Um and, and it isn't our call, um except to the extent that we regulate the square footage and all that.
Two cents from the guy that doesn't go. The ordinance is kinda two-dimensional, it's like looking at this piece of paper. When you get to the lot and you see this actual situation, the circumstances that all this is gonna happen, you're three-dimensional. And that's where the logic and practicality comes into play, so. And the ordinance tells you to consider those things.
Because I, I do think we're gonna see other applications in the future where. Um the argument will be, I can't move my camp back any further, even though there's no slope limitations, there's no septic system in the way. Because I can't then do my addition, that's why I asked my original question of where are we with respect to. Uh the ordinance, you know.
There's nothing in the way. That's totally different.
There was no slope there.
Okay, but last week that, there was disagreement about that.
So, um you know, if there was a fat law, then there's nothing in the way, why are you gonna move it back? But there's something in the way, uh it's path.
Well, no, I, I'm not disagreeing with you now, it's just that the conversation was considerably different at our last meeting.
Will we ever be able to put an addition on the back of a, of a home? If there's nothing in the way, or will it have to go inside, I, I agree with you, the slope actually helps us out, it takes the man out of our hands, if the camp is back as. You know, as practical as it can go, and now we're adding an addition, but if they, if the slope wasn't there, I agree with you, like. How far back can you put it, could you ever put an addition on the back?
Well, and, and we've had others in, including in Pinkham's Cove where it was a pancake flat. Uh parcel, but what was in the way? Power line.
Hmm.
Uh-huh. There's always something that seems.
Yeah, but if it's in the way of the camp, it's gonna be in the way of the addition.
In the way of the addition, that's right.
Right, so, yeah, I mean, that's gonna be something we're gonna have to figure out, like. In this case, it's easy because if we have a slope there, so it, it makes it kinda easy.
I just, I'm wondering what, I, I, I'm hearing you, but I got a question to either clarify or whatever. If this were a perfectly flat piece of land and it was only ninety feet deep. Um and the instructor is on the water. And they want to move it back on this flat land to the greatest practical extent. Do you agree that, yeah, we'll move it back? There might be a ten-foot setback from the road, so move it back so the back end of the camp is eight feet. Uh or they wanna, they wanna propose an addition at the same time, they want that addition at ten feet. Ten more feet on the back, but the structure that's by the water could be moved back to where they wanna put the. Would you agree that they would uh? Would be putting the addition on the side if they can get the structure back to the.
Well, that, that's what I was talking about, that's, that's, that's the issue, and, and, you know. They're also allowed to put an addition on, so, you know, you can't say you're not allowed to put an addition on, but that's something we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to figure out, I agree. You know, you'll never, if it's a fat, flappy ceiling, you'll never be able to put an addition on the back of the home. If we say you can, if we say you can do an addition any way you want, as long as you don't go over the square footage and height. If we allow that first, and then we say, okay, now how far back do you have to move it? You move it back to the back of the addition as far as possible. Ten feet from, you know, from the road.
Yeah, and I, I don't agree with that argument, but. So there, there, let me just say, there is some disagreement still, what.
No, I, I agree. I, I'm, I'm just saying, that is definitely not what, what, what we're gonna come up, you know, come upon, but. The slant being there present on this, you know, certificate, solid, it takes it out of our hand. It makes it almost really common sense. And if you, like, if, if you were there, you would, you know, we'd probably be voting on what we really would have in mind. But it, it is a great point in the future on flat land. That's. We're gonna have to try to itemize it, you know?
So, um, you think we're ready, ready to vote?
I am.
I'll make a motion that we accept, um. We approve, uh, Manisha and Takers. Is that correct? Uh, application as submitted with the condition of, uh, submitting a certified contractor number. Before the start of construction.
I was beginning that, I'm going, it is saying again, and I missed.
I make a motion to, uh, to approve. Manisha and Takers', uh, application as submitted. Uh, with the condition of supplying the certified contractor number before. The start of construction.
Okay, thank you. Uh, could we put your head on as demonstrated kind of option to be?
Okay, so we're gonna do a roll call.
As a reminder, we need to do the findings of fact first.
Oh, okay. Let's see here. So we, we are voting to deem the application complete. Right? So the motion is to have the application being closed and completed as it is. And we accept it as originally was submitted. And then we'll go to finding of facts. So we, we're going that the application is complete.
Yeah, we, we don't even have to do that under, under this ordinance, but, um, but we need to go through the findings of fact and then, then. And then, and then vote on, on, uh, greatest, uh, motion.
Okay, so, um. We, I'm sorry for pulling, it weren't in a. Uh, commercial ordinance, I mean, commercial development application two weeks ago and that, that's throwing me off a little bit.
Before we do that, would John like to add anything?
Oh, sure. John, you wanna add anything to the discussion?
No, I'm fine. I'm fine. Thank you.
Alright.
Alright, thank you.
So then we're gonna go through the findings of facts then. So, um. We're gonna proceed with the final effects for the application for six Chesnut Drive. Uh, tax map fifty lot twenty-three. And this is, um, a little bit of a lengthy document, maybe not twenty minutes, bear with us. Uh, the application on date. Will be eight three. Twenty twenty-three. Apply for the shoreline permit for the expansion, renovation, relocation. And foundation for existing cottage. Um, the application was presented to the planning board. On today, seven twenty and eight three of this year. Uh, the final effects and conclusions of law were developed in conjunction with consideration of the permit application. Conclusions of law. Based upon the application materials, testimony, statements, evidence. Document and other materials submitted to it. And the above finding of fact, the Belgrade Planning Board finds the project permitted. Is permitted under. Section fourteen, table one in the ordinance. And her, herder makes the following conclusions based on the applicable provisions. In section sixteen D of the ordinance. Number one. Will maintain safe and healthy conditions by boat, uh. The board found the standard was met. Uh, so I'm gonna do rock, uh, call vote now. Uh, Mr. Sakara.
Yes.
Mr. Surgeon.
Yes.
Mr. Seal.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
So I vote yes too, so a vote of five in favor, non-oppose. That passed. Second, uh, will not result in water pollution, erosion. Or sedimentation of, uh, to surface waters. By boat, the board found this standard was met. Mr. Sakara.
Will not.
It, it, it was. Was met.
Oh, was. I thought you said not polluted. Well, I think she will and will not.
Yeah, the, the statement says it will not result in pollution.
That will not.
So, so that, that is met.
Yeah, okay, yes.
Mr. Surgeon.
Uh, well, it will not in that.
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Seal.
Yes, with two conditions. One, the stormwater, which the standard condition and the condition about the contractor. Providing, uh, the name and number of the DEP certified excavation contractor.
I'm the new guy.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
And I vote yes with those two conditions too. So five in favor, non-oppose. Number three, will adequately provide for the disposal of all wastewater. By boat, the board found the standard was met. Mr. Sakara.
Yes.
Mr., uh, Surgeon. Mr. Seal.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander. And I vote yes with five in favor, non-oppose. Will not have an adverse impact on spawning grounds. Fish, aquatic life, bird, and other wildlife habitat. By boat, the board found the standard was met. Mr. Sakara.
Yes.
Mr., uh, Surgeon.
Yes.
Mr. Seal.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander. And I vote yes and is five in favor, non-oppose. Will conserve short cover and visual as well as actual points of access. To inland waters. By boat, the board found this standard was met. Mr. Sakara.
Yes.
Mr. Surgeon.
Yes.
Mr. Seal.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander. And me, Sarah Langgett vote yes, so five in favor, non-oppose. Will protect archaeological and historical resources as designated. In the comprehensive plan. By boat, the board found this standard was met. Mr. Sakara.
Yes.
Mr. Surgeon.
Yes.
Mr. Seal.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander. And me, Sarah Langgett vote yes, so it's five in favors, non-oppose. Will avoid problems associated with a flood, with flood plain development and use. By boat, the board found the standard was met. Mr. Sakara.
Yes.
Mr., uh, Surgeon.
Yes.
Mr. Seal.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander. And Alan Getbow, yes, two surviving favorite, non-oppose. Number eight. It is in conformance with the provisions of section fifteen land use standards. This is a lengthy question. What we're gonna do, we're gonna go through all the items and we vote at the end. By boat of the board that is found that this standard was met based on evidence in record. And further follow as follows. A, minimum lot size. Applicable?
Yes.
Principal and accessory structures.
Yep.
Campgrounds. And then. Individual private campsites. And then. Commercial and industrial uses. And then. Parking areas. And then. Road and drivers. And then. Signs. And then. Stormwater, water run, uh, runoff.
Yes.
Yes, yes. Septic waste disposal systems.
Yes.
Essential services. And then.
Yes, and then.
Minimal exploration and extraction.
And then.
No gold in there, huh? Agriculture. Timber harvesting and land management roads.
And then.
Clearing and removal of vegetation of activities other than timber harvesting. Hazard trees, storm damaged trees, and dead tree remove, remove. And then. Reception to clearing and meditation removal requirements. And then. Re-rea, re-vetigation requirements. Erosion and sedimentation control. Shoreline stabilization. Yes. And then?
Yeah.
Soils. And then. Water quality. Yes, yes.
Yes.
Historical and archaeological sites. And then. Resource protection.
And then.
So, we have here. In question eight, we have one, two, three, four, five, six items that are gonna be voted on again. Is that is minimal lot standards, principal and accessory structures, stormwater runoff. Septic waste disposal system, erosion and sedimentation controls, and water quality. Water quality. The board found that these standards. Were met based on the evidence in record and further, and, and record. So. Uh, both, uh, roll call vote. Mrs. Sakara.
Yes.
Mr. Surgeon.
Yes.
Mr. Seal.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander. And sir, for yes to, so five in favor, non-oppose. Conditions of approval needed to meet require, uh, Belgrade S L Z ordinance findings. In section sixteen D. Uh, we have a standard, um, condition of approval, which is a stormwater runoff. From new and expanded structures in accordance to section fifteen I. Uh, the Belgrade Shoreline Sonny Ordinance and main D P protection best management practices. As outlined in the conservation practices for home owner. So that's right online, something that you can look at. Um. Then also we're gonna need, we have to put that in here, that the, uh, need, need for.
Certified. Shoreline certified contractor.
Usually we do that, um, it's been to the CEO for, to start a construction.
So you just, yeah, submit it to the CEO, yeah, just like you said.
So now we got, um, to the real thing here. So now, um, the application is closed, uh, we all voted on this now. This vote is to approve the entire application. So we need a motion to approve the entire.
I make a motion to approve the application as submitted with two, um. Conditions. One is the shoreline certified contractor number. And the second is the best D P pack, management practice of.
Right. So I need a second.
I second.
So Sakara, Mr. Sakara seconded, uh. Um, and we proceed to a roll call vote. Mrs. Sakara.
Yes.
Mr., uh, Surgeon.
Yes.
Mr. Seal.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander. And me, Sarah Langgett also vote yes, so five in favor and opposed. Um. You wanna have to go and work with, um, hands on the permit? Congratulations. Uh, based on the above final facts on the data, we. Then we'll define the direction. Um, and we.
So. Well, in a quiet moment, I have a question just for discussion. Doesn't pertain to this case at all. But we touched upon it. Practical extent, if there's a separate tank behind the house. Which there is not in this case, but if there were, would it be practical to remove and relocate the separate tank?
The way we've been going for this, whatever the state guidelines is to be away from that separate tank. I think it's eight feet, nine feet, whatever, ten feet, whatever it is. That's.
But if there were areas where it could be relocated.
Yeah, that's what we've been going by. That's.
Yeah.
Alright. So the last page. Um. Uh, need to get a change updated for next time. And then last page I crossed out.
You're gonna have to talk to, uh, Mary about that.
Okay, I'll do that.
Then listen to me, obviously.
Sounds good.
And you'll get.
Seems like a climatic, doesn't it?
Let me just say thank you. I know so much work went into all of this and thank you for protecting our lakes, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Take care, everyone.
You too.
Great time. I gotta go.
Yeah, we can take it louder, break it, thank you. Five minutes.
We have meeting.
Nope, there's a minutes for previous. Me, apparently weren't voted upon.
Oh, really?
There's a note from. Hey, there, on top of that. Who needs a copy of the, uh? Multi-family dwelling unit or this?
I have one.
I think it was originally, I made these yellow, so I know. They'd stand out tonight, they wouldn't get lost in the. No, no, this is our town ordinance.
Oh, the town.
Well, as long as you got the important one. Actually, I'll take one more soon, freehold punch, I didn't.
I like to look it online.
Thank you.
The, uh, the ordinance, a couple of the ordinance. The, uh, multiple. Twenty years, forty five, forty six years? I was twenty five years old.
Nineteen seventy eight was a good year, wasn't it?
Was it?
Nineteen seventy eight was a good year, just like wine. What were you doing in nineteen seventy eight?
Once again, the gardener.
For my first. Moving back to Pennsylvania, the win, uh, it's a good thing.
We were actually building our house in nineteen seventy eight. Guess I was in Washington State.
Yeah. You got the adult, there's no going there.
Greg found that right away.
We use that a lot.
I hope that's not our jurisdiction.
So, uh. The accessory dwelling unit. I was finished talking about that tonight, we're gonna make an action plan, or what's the next step, or? Um, you all have a copy of the. The ordinance rule. Black and white, which is what the state put out, the guidelines. Like the ordinance. The accessory dwelling unit.
Oh, you handed that out, right?
That, that's the one that's gonna be impacted by this new one.
I encourage you all, look through it. Come up with the next state, step. A worksheet maybe to create the ordinance or. Looking through the other, see what the other towns have done, what stands out to you as an issue now and issue in the future. Keep in mind these. dwellings and dwelling units that are produced in the next year or two will be sold. In the next four, five, or inherited by somebody that has no intention to actually live in them. So we need to make an ordinance that can apply through transitions.
Anyway, when, if the thing was right now, we can terminate that contract. To, yeah, give it out of ownership, go and reassess it. Yeah.
Of course, your question about a work plan, I, I think. You know, we don't wanna get too far ahead of, uh. Uh, K V cog, cause, um, they're gonna be a lot more familiar with the. Um, with the finer points of this and, um. And so I, I think, you know, our job until such time as they're ready to go. And, and able to work with us after the, their. At the same time, or after we're working with Solon, um, would be to, you know, read some of the materials that you've given us, including the rules from. The Department of Economic and Community Development, cause for me, that, that's more helpful than the guidance they came out with. Um, but, um, like I said earlier, I, there's a whole section in there, like I, I don't even understand if that. Applies to Belgrade, and that's, you know, for me, that's something that I'll need help from K V cog to figure out.
I'm just asking for, that we have an idea and you wanna call it a nutshell. Where we wanna be when K V cog is ready, as far as do we wanna require two parking places per unit? Or two parking places per bedroom? Um. The minimum size is one hundred ninety square feet, the maximum can be determined by us. Okay, so it'd be easy to say, well, let's just say nine hundred square feet is the maximum. Um, is that footprint or living space? Okay, typically, this would be. You know, it needs to be defined. At the same time. The accessory dwelling unit, as it's written in the state handout, is supposed to be. Smaller than the original primary dwelling. Well, if you've got a small, a big lot with a small house on it, it's two bedrooms now. Say six hundred and eighty square feet, and they wanna build a nine hundred square foot accessory dwelling unit, will they be allowed? Because the accessory dwelling unit's gonna be bigger than the original. So. There's a lot. K V cog doesn't know what Belgrade wants to do. Belgrade knows what Belgrade wants to do.
Right.
We have an idea of what we want, they're gonna help us get to where we wanna be. Not that they, we're gonna break, you know, it's absolutely, so we need to come up with. An idea, a consensus as to what would work best for Belgrade.
Well, I'm just thinking, maybe if we take the approach, we can come up with, uh, first, a draft, first draft, or make it. Not too detailed, just to get a, get a, get a feel for.
This is outline, basically.
And then. Yeah, we have something for K V part, like you already said, kind of take it from there, at the start.
Yeah.
And then. Yeah.
The, um, way they describe, there are different levels of service that they're. Really can provide to different to towns, depending on what the town selects. Uh, they, it's like tier one through five and, um, you know, tier one. Uh, I, I don't have that in front of me, I don't remember that, what that is, but tier two is probably where we'll fall. Because it, it, it would be, uh, limit the scope of work to a review of our ordinance to see which ones are not. Compliance with this new state housing law. And, and then take it from there in terms of making change, helping us make changes. Um, uh, tier five is like, I think some towns are gonna be doing like. They don't even have a comprehensive plan, for example, so they're, they want, they need to kind of start from scratch. Um, and, um, um, I don't know where Solon's at, it sounds like they've worked with Solon quite a bit, but, um. Anyway, so, um, the, uh. Uh, I, I, I think Hans is correct, you know, we should give some thought on. Uh, you know, what, what we would envision would be acceptable, uh, and needed in Belgrade, uh. That list that you provided that shows what the different tent, some of the different towns have currently. Some of which is clearly not in compliance with this law, like the parking requirements, uh. Uh, some of those parking requirements probably not gonna be compliant with this law, but, um. And, and they, they go from fairly simple to like Scarborough's is obscenely, uh, complex. Uh, and, you know, so you, you got the practical aspects like that. You know, how, you know, do you really wanna make it, you know, with, maybe that makes sense for Scarborough, uh, you know, one of the fastest growing towns in, in the state. But, you know, probably doesn't make a hell of a lot of sense for Belgrade. Uh, so.
Um, just for the forward to now, um, during the middle of Monday, on Thursday, I'm submitting. Um, Mister Seal inquired. Uh. How much thought? As K V cog and even, uh, the people that are putting together this L D. Plays on the impact of, uh, sewage. How does the capacity of sewer, uh, sewage capacity will be impacted by the. The increase in the mono dwelling capacity. And especially here, in, in towns like Belgrade, that. We live in a watershed, and that the watershed is very susceptible to this kind of, uh, um. Uh. Impact, impact of, uh, yeah, of having more humans. Yeah.
And, and not just the watershed, the lakes, of course, but, um.
The drinking water.
Drinking water supply wells, and, you know, there's some places in town, the depot, part of the depot. Obviously, everybody knows about the various problems that have been down in the, the village over the many years, um. Uh, and why there's so many holding tanks down there now, uh, there're just some places that have already. Uh, had, uh, drinking water supplies contaminated by subsurface wastewater disposal, admittedly not. Ones designed to current day standards generally, but, um. Uh, so, you know, we just want, we don't wanna have this, uh, a unintended consequence of this. Greater density of development. Drive the town of Belgrade or force the town of Belgrade to have to build a public drinking water supply system for a part of town, because there's a whole bunch of. Contaminated private wells at the end of it all.
Can agree with that.
Uh, that, that would definitely have, uh, you know, uh, would not be cost effective. Um, the, um, I don't think that'll happen, uh, I actually, one of the things I. And others may want, wish to do the same, is I, I went back and reread the state plumbing code, because, uh, I needed to refresh myself on how. It deals with when you connect, uh, a, a second, uh, residence to an existing system. Uh. You know, the separations required there, uh, from private drinking water supply wells, cause there's a whole matrix of, of conditions. There's hunt, better than I do, um, I mean, I might be. Uh, based on my experience at D E P and dealing with remediation of contaminated drinking water supply wells, is there certain. Geological circum-situations in the state, primarily shallow bedrock soils. Coastal areas, uh, and on Santa Gravla aquifers, where the state plumbing code does an inadequate job of protecting drinking water supplies that are nearby. Uh, and D E P's got the data to prove it, you know, um, the, uh. Uh, and so, you know, there may be some supplemental things we wanna ask K V cog about that could. Um, add, uh, some more protections to the neighbors' wells, for example. Uh, maybe it's not really necessary, I mean, the one that I, me, came to my mind is if somebody's gonna connect the. Uh, uh, an accessory dwelling unit, uh, uh, to an existing system. Maybe it's an appropriate requirement to ha-have that system inspected.
No, it's absolutely.
Re-evaluating. Um, I'm all about that too, I mean, but they're gonna add more to it, the substance is gonna be very.
Oh, yeah.
Or reevaluate, reevaluate, so it fits.
Yeah.
All depends.
The basic sewer. Subsurface, subsurface sewer will, basically, and then in-law apartment, which was, these would be considered. An in-law apartment, the granny flat, or whatever you wanna call it. It's not like adding an extra bedroom. Because they're full dwelling units. They are rated at a hundred and twenty gallons per day, so the one bedroom exception that goes with most. Uh, systems is out the window. Low systems, if you have a three-bedroom house, and you're gonna add a four-bedroom, a fourth bedroom. You don't need to expand your field immediately, but you do need to have a site of evaluation, create a plan for you to have on hand. In case it happens, you're ready to move. So that's one little loophole in the residential side that will not apply here. Whoever creates these accessory dwelling units, unless it is attached in the house. Without a kitchen. You know, again, it won't be an accessory dwelling unit at that point, they will have them have a separate septic tank and. Expand it.
Or a logic.
Expand the field.
Yeah.
Or have a separate field, but they will have individual tanks.
Yeah, cause you had in the bedroom and a kitchen.
Yeah, so it's gonna have, well, they're gonna have two tanks go into one field or a totally different. System.
I meant that.
Well, I actually will, you know, be heavily dependent on you, on to guide us in those areas when we have that discussion, so.
And I agree with you about. The state not being aware where all this filters to. Because, you know, like the salt standard. Your site evaluators come out. To set, you know, doing evaluation per septic field, they're probing for soil, you know, just a couple of feet deep. To see how deep they can go down to find good soil, they're not looking twenty, thirty feet down, they can't. Right, and I'd be curious what studies D E P has done. And the state, they've mapped who sonar or wherever to see where's the, the viable. You know, where's it gonna go right down to the aquifer, where's, you're gonna hit bedrock and.
Yeah.
Play.
Uh, I'm not aware of any kind of large-scale studies of that nature, what I, what I know of are places like Friendship, Harpswell. On the coast, a, a whole, a, any peninsula, you can, you can put in a groundwater monitoring well on one property and find. Ivy peroxide, nitrates, um, maybe not, maybe not biologicals. But, uh, all the water soluble things, uh, caffeine is a great tracer in groundwater. Uh, of, uh, wastewater and, um. And even if it's either been approved through a variance from D H H S, or if it's a brand-new system. Uh, same in Waterboro, uh, we did work there, postage stamp lots, everybody had a septic system. Everybody had a private well, they all got contaminated with gasoline and solvents from, uh, uh, an old mill. And, uh, when we went to do the basic water sampling, they were already contaminated with nitrates and everything. Uh, and had probably been for quite some time. So it's all, that's the thing about, the, the understanding about the plumbing code, it really, where it started, and, and it's been much improved, I have to say that. Uh, but, uh, it was to treat biologics, bacteria primarily. And not the water soluble nitrates, uh, pharmaceuticals, all the other stuff that goes into your wastewater system.
Anyway. So you can get out your protein or Valium in your drinking water.
Yeah. Right, and you can brush up where you had headaches and then.
Okay.
So next will be, uh, 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 planning board cast. Uh, Mister Seal did a good reconnaissance of, uh, an assessment. Of things that we have left lingering over the last year or so, and that needs attention. And, uh, uh, hands printed out here, and so the thing with this will be. For us, uh, very quickly, we could, uh, determine, uh. What is priority, so we can be. Hands will know what, from one to ten, and then in that order, you will be squeezing that in the agenda. On the com- upcoming agendas. So, um. I have an idea what to put in first and, uh, um. I would, I would start with, uh. So division stuff, I don't think we're gonna see. Uh, solar. Application anytime soon in this town. And I'll do, I will just start it just as it is laid out right there, in that order, that we might take in it.
I don't know if people think there's something that, you know, is missing from that list, um. That we need to do to implement those two relatively new ordinances. Those were the ones I could think of.
Think, uh. Hans has mentioned. Um. Two, two to four other items as well. And that would, those items were required, uh, um. An upgrade in the ordinance, a little change in the ordinance, and then all that will have to go to, like, selectmen and then go to the voters. But that, I think the application piece, which is. But that, I think the application piece, which is a, a piece of, I say. Document that we actively will need to use. In the board process will, will have a higher. Power lead. And changing the ordinance. You can, what do you think? You think that should go before this or what is your take on it? The clause, the sunset clause and.
Well, I, I think some of these things can be done in mutual time. We're gonna spend fifteen minutes talking about. One item and, you know. Nobody says we want to talk about one thing per night.
True words were never spoken.
If we haven't worked practically into it, it will be.
But, you know, I don't think that we can do one, we should just say we're gonna do one thing at a time and when that's done, we'll move on to the next because then. We're looking at a three-year timeline.
Okay.
Yeah, we're going with the speed of government here. Let's change it a little bit.
So let's say we hang on to this. List, we're gonna go in this priority and the way it's ordered. And then I'm gonna add the. Ordinance part. To the end and as we have to say.
These are all ordinance. These all apply to ordinance.
Yeah, but it's. It's an application, so the application form has to go to the borders too?
No, no, this, all these are. Are solely our, our decision.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, no, it's, it's entirely our decision on.
So. The big priority is that LD. Two thousand and three ordinance and that's what, that we're gonna do that first. And maybe because if we wrap. I doubt, I doubt we're gonna wrap this up. Now that we're talking about it. I doubt we're gonna wrap it up by mid-October because we depend on KB cog and they're not gonna be even ready maybe till the end of September. So that said. I will even see, I mean, it's impossible for us to have this, the ordinance approved. By, by ready for summer, it's not to the borders in March. So that said. Or maybe. Have we ever done a ordinance approval in the June vote?
Planning board ordinance dispersed.
So maybe then, maybe then, yeah, maybe you can slide. From March all the way to June, April, May, June, so in order three months, maybe we have till December.
I mean, it, it really depends on.
If we can put in the June vote.
Yeah, right. And if, if there is, you know, something other than the, the school board, the school budget.
Budget, yeah. That, you know, that they keep in that law, they're trying to get rid of that on the referendum in the summer.
Oh, right.
So I don't know if that's gonna pass or not. So there's a lot of moving pieces here. So. So then, then let's tackle first everything that is gonna impact the ordinance. LD twenty. Two thousand and three first and then your concerns in the ordinances. And then we'll move on to this page. I think that will be the way to go. Because then we have our docs in a row. For either March or June next year and that's all, that work is already done. Open our hands, the ordinance related stuff. And then we can move on to. The. We document that we need internal. If that works for everybody.
Yeah.
Just a little concerned that. Others would probably have a better handle on this, but if, we got a new subdivision application and I agree with you that a subdivision is. A new subdivision is far more likely. Than a, a solar facility in the. Next year or whatever. But. You know, we would be caught kind of with our pants down at the moment because we wouldn't even, the current application form is. Out of date. It doesn't include some of the things that are in the new ordinance and. And we're not doing the applicant any favor by giving them handing out that old application form. I don't know, maybe that, maybe that is an unlikely scenario in the next year as well. I don't. I, I think the more likely scenario and we could, partly because we've seen it twice now is amendments to previously approved. Subdivisions. And.
That's probably the, the universal shortest that Hans has.
Yeah, so.
Yes, just a revision, which is basically the old application with a revision checkbox so that the B structures would be different. But most of the information would be the same. It's, we better visit. That information. Needs to be on the table for discussion. Again. Does everything? On this board get done in committee during the meeting or is there? Development work done in teams on the outside and brought in to be discussed as committee?
By committee.
Me, when we, for the commercial development review ordinance, and this is, you know, a good number of years ago. In that particular case, and it doesn't have to be done this way, it could be a group of people, but. I. Developed the draft based on read fields or application. And I brought it to the board and then we went from there.
Right. So you were a team of one who didn't work outside and brought it to the committee.
Right.
This worksheet for the. Accessory dwelling, I can make a punch list. If you all just do the studies, next meeting, we can. Talk about filling out the punch list of some basics and then add to it, things that maybe are left out or. Several of us can make punch lists of what are concerned, topics of concern are.
Well, I don't know much about it yet. I'm not gonna grasp the whole thing, just reading some.
This is what the state requiring, it's not mungo jumbo. And these are examples of what other towns have done, given last meeting and this meeting. So. There's information to absorb right there.
We're going to wait for KB cog and get a discussion going. That's the way I work.
I, I, I feel that we have as much as we can. Have our docs in a row before KB cog comes online. So. I will have to look for time in my schedule. And.
Remember, we're volunteers to.
More on, more on August. First, this first two weeks are John's time. So.
What do we decide here?
So we, I guess. We have an idea of the, are we gonna, how are we gonna proceed with the?
You're the chairperson.
The bad luck. So we already have in order all the items here. We're gonna tackle LD two thousand and three first. And then we're gonna do all the items that you would like to. Place in and to revamping ordinance. And then we're gonna go on through. The rest of the list that Mr. Seal has. And as you go in the agenda, we, as we, let's say. Let's say rather than put in agenda, let's say in the agenda, you said, we're gonna dedicate one hour. To. Going through the list that we have. And most likely, we're gonna spend our time the next three, three weeks. Three meetings in the two thousand and three. But. I hear that. Part of the group is more inclined to wait to get it. That will be the end of September. So then between now and then. We can plug in all the other items. And on my own. Maybe if.
Let's keep in mind.
Mr. Sheer and I, we can work separate. Be offline before KB cog comes online.
Not knowing KB cog's timeline. We're putting ourselves in a better position to just sit back and wait because if they take too long. Somebody wants to build one of these things, they can build whatever they want.
The. I, I, I agree with sort of a little bit of what everybody's saying. The. I, I do think though, we can do more than one thing at a time and. And I, I say that partly because if we approached it as we have these kinds of tasks in the past. I mean, like, for example, I would be willing to. Develop a draft, the first draft, application form for the subdivision ordinance. I actually find that helpful because it forces me to become familiar with the ordinance, but. And then bring it back. And so the time that the board, the full board would have to spend would be reviewing that. And that could be done concurrently with, or even before we maybe even hear back from KB cog. So that, that's another approach. That it doesn't have to be done, everything has, does not have to be done in series, but it could be done in a parallel pass.
If we put teams together.
Yeah, I, I don't think we can do everything in parallel pass because I, I think there's too much, but. But I do think that we can. Work on the work on LD two thousand and three along with the. With. Whatever we decide of these applications documents is our top priority.
Okay, so. Would it be fair to say that? For the discussion next week. We have three. Three big documents here. That we. Each one of us pick. One or two that we would like to get good at. You know. Processing it in our heads and making notes. And then come to share with the group. Maybe. You guys pick, each one of us have to pick. One that is the premier and the second one to look at. But all, all documents should be. Kind of covered. We all should read all, all documents. But if we don't have time, at least if, if you compromise to take one document, that'd be great. Because then we can really sound ourselves against you because you read that one very well.
Just real quick on the seventeen, I'm not gonna be able to make that, I had something come up.
Okay.
So I won't be in the seventeen.
That's, that's fine. Thank you for letting us know. So I, I myself. I really like the, the new stuff. I wanna read this one very well. And I compromise myself with that and then the old one. Okay. So these are my two picks. I can. Don't care, I will call no document one, the oldest one. And then two. The, the law by itself, the new law by itself, or the, or they're trying to do. And then three supplemental stuff that. Hans gave us. I'm picking one and three to read. And. Each one of you can do same or just pick one or you'll say, well, simply they can. That's fine, too.
Yeah, I, I don't. Sarah, I, I, I've actually spent some time already with. These regulations and since I made a career gobbly cook. I, I, I could probably. You know, summarize, summarize these to the extent I understand the parts that I don't understand and, and, and lay out some of the things that. Be some of the questions we may need to lay out, KB cog. I'm gonna help us through that.
Yeah, I trust George.
Mr. Baker. And Cameron, you were number one.
Hello.
Number one.
Sarah, those are reference materials.
Yeah.
They're really, the one thing that needs to be studied is this. And we also know.
The main thing, yeah.
So. That's the regulations. The rest is references. Well, a lot of the full accounts are.
I think if George goes over it and comes up with some questions, then we can dial in and.
Well, and this is what I was talking about making a worksheet for that time. So we can. Start to put what we want in our ordinance together and apply it through this. Okay, so that's, that's one thing that I'm working on. George is committed to it too already. But George also committed to the subdivision application form. Redoing that. So there's two things to talk about next meeting.
Right.
Okay, then I guess after the application form, which we go through the subdivision. The next topic would be the application, complete this checklist. If somebody has trouble sleeping, maybe they can start to work with that. And then that's gonna be the findings of fact. So we can methodically go through these things. But I just think working on one thing. In a series is not perfect in this approach, but. Two or three and I'll be introducing memos along the way of other stuff that comes up. Needs to be.
Great. I think we have a plan. That's awesome. Thank you so very much, everyone. So. Our pool minutes. So we can take a moment and go through all of them. And we'll take them down. On the, all this one, which was last December. How much December here? No. We have May. I don't know last December.
She didn't, she didn't give me last December.
Yeah, so it's twelve, one, one, two.
She didn't talk to me on that one.
Okay, so we only have May and June. We had July six, July twentieth. And May.
May, Gigi, I wasn't there.
Yeah. That's already done. I wanna see that we did four to. Then what to.
Well, I thought, I thought so as well because I remember. You know, I had missed it and so consequently I remember not reviewing it.
May fourth.
May fourth.
Yeah, one, just the three of us.
Yeah, yeah.
And I didn't have any comments on the May fourth one. Compared with KB, yeah, I was going. We need to formally approve it.
Thank you. I'm gonna show many moves. Are we good? So I will propose to go first through the minutes of December first. And uh we have a present. There, Mr. Seal, Mr. Alexander, Mr. Baker, and Mr. Sergeant. So I will call those four people to roll uh uh. Roll call votes, alright? So I need a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as written. For December first, two thousand twenty-two.
I'll second.
Mister Seal make the first motion, Mister um Baker seconded, so roll call vote.
Hold on a second.
Okay.
I had a comment that.
Oh, I'm sorry, discussion, I'm sorry.
No, that's it. Not your fault, uh. The other day, on the first page of that December the first thing, it says. Main deity of taste of hers that there be no vegetation near the right of way of sanctuary. So the planning board has agreed to waive this requirement. For a property in the village district or this property in the village district.
That specific property, yeah.
Could say this, I guess.
They don't pay.
Otherwise, we waived it for every. Property in a village district or.
Any, any other discussion on that? Uh. Mid set of minutes. So I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as amended. Uh. Of December first. So I'm gonna go to a local vote. Uh Mister Baker.
Yes.
Mister Sergeant.
Yes.
Mister Seal.
Yes.
Mister Alexander.
Yes.
So four approve, yes, and none opposed. That's approved. So with that on, that uh correction. As noted in the video. So uh any corrections on the May fourth? Oh minutes. No, so I will entertain a motion and a second to approve this minutes as they are. Uh only. Me, Langue, Mister Baker, and Mrs. Akara can do that.
Make a motion to approve the uh minutes of the building. I think that I totally am about that.
So uh Mister Baker makes the motion to approve them, Mister uh Sergeant second them. So to vote, it was on, is on the only uh me, Mister Baker, and Mister Sakara. Uh call uh. Roll call votes, Mister Baker.
Yes.
Mrs. Akara.
Yes.
And me, Sarah, I'm gonna approve it, so two says three, in favor, zero opposed. So those minutes pass. Any uh corrections on the minutes of July twentieth? I see none, I entertain a motion to approve the minutes of July twentieth as they are.
I'll make a motion to approve minutes of July twentieth as written.
Second.
I'll second.
Uh so the uh this motion from Mister Seal to approve the minute, the minutes of the art. And a second from Mister Alexander, so roll call vote. Uh Mister Sakara.
Yes.
Mister Sergeant. Yeah, you were. Peter Sergeant.
Which are we doing, seven twenty?
Seven twenty.
Last meeting.
Yeah, um Mister Seal.
Yes.
Mister Alexander.
Yes.
And I also vote yes, so it's five in favor, zero opposed. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
This just the July sixth one, it's just for our information, uh cause I'm pretty certain that we approved that already.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm making a motion a little bit.
I'll second.
Mister Baker makes a motion to adjourn, Mister Seal taking that.
I'm not, I'm not really remembering.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I second.
So Mister Seal make the motion to adjourn, Mister Sakara seconded, roll call vote, Mrs. Akara.
Yes.
Mister uh Sergeant.
Yes.
Mister Seal.
Yes.
With Alexander.
Yes.
And Mister, we are done.